All right, we can call the meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Mayor Breckus?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jablonski?
Here.
Councilmember Albritton?
Present.
Councilmember Hartman?
Here.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Excellent. If you'll please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, in the midst of all the liberty and justice of all.
Excellent. Welcome, everyone. Good to have everybody here. Our first item on our agenda is a very special item. I know Councilmember Albritton has done an amazing job in pulling this group together and then sat in on their meetings as most, as pretty much the entire council did. And they did an amazing job, put in a lot of time and effort. Jim, if you'll please take it from here.
Thank you, Mayor. I know it's a short agenda tonight, so I'm only going to take about an hour and a half at the podium, so we'll be out of here by 10 o'clock, okay?
Excellent. Excellent.
Appreciate it.
I think most of y'all remember that when I started the campaign, I went around, spoke to the residents in town, and one of the number-one concerns was safety and traffic. And that stuck in my craw a little bit. January of this year, I come to town council. I asked town council if they would approve a six-month committee to address some of the issues in town. The town council graciously said yes, and within a few weeks, we had a committee together. Each one of you, the town council, appointed someone, so we were represented from the east side to the west side. And I'm going to tell you what, you couldn't have picked a better group of people to represent the town. The very first meeting that we were here, they jumped right in. There was no discussion. There was no anything. They jumped in and come up with a bunch of ideas. The second meeting, Andy asked the town of Davie police chief to come in, along with, I think, five or six other officers. A lot of questions were asked, a lot of things were discussed, and it was just an overall good meeting. The third meeting, same thing, a lot of discussion on things that were going on. Bob Hartman asked, you know, as part of the safety, the horses get out, is there any way that you could get some people to donate bridals? That's taken place, Bob, so that's great. The fourth meeting, each one of the committee members was asked to come back in June with their five most important, what they felt to them was their most important issues. In June, they came back, and we put together a list in June. And on the council meeting in June, just two days, three days later, we proposed to the council five items. Those five items were the purchase of two additional handheld lasers, the purchase of two speed trailers, which is currently being in the process of doing. We do have the two handheld lasers now. The purchase of 30 additional Eye on Crime Eagle watches. I have those up in my neighborhood. I've put them up in, on the signs that are currently up, so just a couple of nuts and bolts, and they go up pretty easy. We've got other signs that are being ordered for, to tell people that there's "Speed Checked by Radar." That sign. And the one that I think is most important, and I think that some of our residents have seen it, and I think that you see that the traffic has actually slowed down. Additional traffic enforcement, all right, there's two officers for three hours, four times a month, and it's spread all over town in all the hotspots, and that will go on for six months to a year. So those are the things that were introduced, and those were the things that were approved. When I gave those recommendations to the council that very night, our vice mayor Jablonski found the money to start it. So by the time we walked out of here, there was funds.
Sorry.
All right. So by the time that we walked out, there was funds available, and things got, and things got started right away. So I was really, really thrilled with that. But this evening, I want to recognize, if I could, the five members of the committee and say thank you to each one of them for, for their time and effort as a volunteer group. And I think it went well. We may have it again next year for a month or two, have their ideas come together, see how things work out. First of all, I'd like to call up Roland Gendell, and he was part of the board. Roland and I were able to ride together for many of the meetings. Roland?
Thank you, sir.
Next, I'd like to call up Walt Butler. Walt? Next, I'd like to call up Ed Gonzalez.
Thank you, Ed.
And we have two this evening, and I hope that they're watching. I'll say hi to them. I'll wave to them. I hope they're watching on YouTube. Louis Rodriguez, he's in the middle part of the state, said he couldn't make it. I do believe he has a letter that he'd like to have read in if he could. Andy, would you read that for me, please?
Sure thing, council member. It's from Louis Rodriguez, who served as the chair for the committee. Good afternoon, everyone. I hope you're all doing well. I'm currently out of town, therefore I couldn't be in today's meeting, but I will be watching via the YouTube channel. First of all, thank you, Jim, for asking me to get involved on this public safety committee. It has been a pleasure working with all of our neighbors and town officials the past several months. Our goal has always been to listen to our residents and bring awareness to areas where we need more safeguarding and protection. Through our meetings and dialogue, we were able to upgrade the tools needed for traffic control and have a consistent presence of police officers in random location throughout southwest ranches to control speeding and bring a safe environment. I look forward to continue working with all of you if needed. We have a beautiful town, and preservation is important to all our residents. Thank you, and have a great evening. Signed, Louis Rodriguez.
Thank you, Andy. Thank you, Louis. Really appreciate it. Louis, that's your certificate, and I'll get that sent to you. And last, Diane DeHaye. She couldn't make it. She's up in the middle part of the state. I've emailed her back and forth, and I will get this up to her as soon as she gives me her address. But I have one more thing that I'd like to say. Andy, don't run away. Could you please come down and join me, please? I'd appreciate it. Andy, as a town administrator, I want to thank you personally, all right, for everything you did to help pull this together, for your leadership, for your help with me and with the whole council, for your undivided attention to it, and for graciously volunteering to be the secretary when nobody else wanted to do it. Thank you so much. That's from me to you. Thank you so much.
This will go towards the staff.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have at this time, and I thank all the committee here.
Hey, Jim, Andy's going to take a picture of everybody. If you guys can come around front here.
Yeah, we're down.
Get down.
We're down this time?
Yeah, it's small enough for you.
All right.
I can put you on an iPhone.
Yeah.
Great job.
Thank you.
You want all that?
Okay.
There's your notes.
All right, now.
I wrote a lot of hats.
Five for five.
Here we go. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Jim?
Yes? Is this your pen? Very good. All right. Next item is public comment. Do you have any public comments this evening?
We have no one registered for public comment.
Really? No? Man. All right.
Shocked.
Okay. Board reports. Do you have any board reports this evening? Seeing none?
Wow.
Councilmember comments?
I'll go.
All right.
And I'll be quick.
All right.
Only got a couple items here. Just want to let everybody know that the rural arts photo contest is still ongoing, and the entries need to be submitted by September 5th. And we have a change to the Flowmobile. It's been moved to the last day of the month, 8:31, same time, from 10:00 to 2:00. So if you want to call Deborah at the town clerk's office to register for that. And just one thing I want to mention, next week, Tuesday, is our budget meeting, our workshop, the 16th, 7:00 here, and I urge everybody to come and see how this process works and give us your input. It's very important, especially this year. It's very important. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Good. Great. Thank you, Gary. We'd like to go next. David, thank you.
All right. Thank everybody for coming out. Just a few comments. Working on the ordinance for the groom's quarters. Just a little backup on this. Back in the end of the month of July, the comprehensive plan advisory board was going through the final edits and final approval of the comprehensive plan amendments, and it came out that the groom quarters, groom's quarters for equestrians and maybe the people that are not in the horse, horse lifestyle, it's a quarters where the people that care for the horses live, and it's most often attached to the, to the barn. Well, inadvertently, that was removed from the ordinances, but it remained a part of the comprehensive plan. So I had asked administration and legal to go ahead and draft something that would reintroduce that back into our code, because once again, horses is part of our culture. I got a call from neighbor Beth Pilgrim on Hunter Lane. Now, I ran into her at one of the Sunshine Ranch's homeowners association gatherings, and she complained to me about the condition of her road, and I drove down it, and it was atrocious. Well, she called me two days ago, and she was bubbly happy. And she said they came out and they did a major, major repair, and she was very happy with the repairs that had taken place, but her road is still scheduled to be resurfaced.
What road is that? Which road is that?
Hunter Lane.
Hunter Lane, yes.
Comes off of 55th off of Polk.
Thank you.
Still doing the final work, work on the sign ordinance to make sure it's constitutionally compliant, and I expect to have that wrapped up this weekend. And then finally, I'd just like to find out what the status is with the LPRs, license plate readers, because I've heard about some instances in the town where LPRs would have been very effective if they were in effect today. So I'd just like to make sure that that's being pursued. That wraps up.
Thank you, David. Jim?
Yeah, Steve, I'll be, I'll be brief. I got a letter from the mayor, or one of the councilmen up there in Sunshine, Sunrise and stuff, and it was a little bit disturbing. Across the county for the 2020 elections, there were 557 precincts, and there's only 345 now. In 2020, there were 376 polling places, and there's only 263. So they're, they're making the areas larger with fewer places to go. Just wanted you to make sure that on election day, if you go to vote in person, to make sure that you know where your polling place is. Mine used to be at the church out on the other side of 186 on Griffin. I now come to town hall. I just found that out when I got my mail-in ballot. My precinct had changed, and my polling place had changed. In the actual polling places for early voting, if you do go to early vote, there'll only be nine in the county this year, as opposed to 14 last year. So they're making it a little bit more difficult. So it doesn't matter if you vote by mail, in person, early vote, or whatever. Just check and make sure where your precinct is, and, you know, by all means, get out and vote. And David, for streets, you know, we have, and if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Emily will tell me, over 60 miles of private roads in southwest ranches. And these potholes that the people are complaining about, even some of the street signs and stop signs they're complaining about, they're responsible for that. The town can't help them. The town can't help them put in new paving or anything such as that. Currently have a street just to the south of me, 62nd. I think there's 16 residents on the street, and they have gotten together, and they are going to repave their street. Going to cost each homeowner a little less than $3,000. And I'm trying to convince them that once they get this street paved, and once they get the swells and the grass in, to turn that street over to the town. I cannot understand why 15 or 16 homeowners would be responsible for a street if some of them were to get hurt, and I'm sure, and I think there was an accident several years ago out in maybe 3, 4, 5, where a resident was hurt, and the owners themselves, the homeowners that own that street, ended up paying a huge amount of money for each and every property owner. If you can get your street fixed, if you can get the potholes done up and in good condition, I'd urge everyone to turn them over to the, to the town. I see no reason to have a private street in southwest ranches. That's all I got, Mayor. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jim. Bob?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I have two things I'd like to talk about. One is kind of a bit of a fun thing, and the other's a little bit more of a challenge that I want to throw out to the council. Mayor, I know you went through the CERT training a couple of years ago, so you don't, you know what it is, so you don't need one of these, and for the rest of you guys, I want to pass you one of those. Davie has a CERT program, and actually, it's, it's interesting that Walt and Dean are here tonight, because you also went through the CERT training years ago. CERT is Community Emergency Response Team, and Davie has a program that they started quite a while ago to prepare for, I'll just call them incidents. They could be anything from a hurricane, a tornado, you know, weather events. It could be a situation where there's a, you know, an event with guns, or schools, or what have you. I mean, they try to prepare you for any scenario. I went through the training. I started it probably six months ago. I believe it's 10 weeks long. You take a test at the end, and they give you the certification. The reason I'm bringing it up is we have about 12 residents in town that have been through it. Mayor and I have both been through it, and fortunately, we, coincidentally, we have some neighbors also that have been through it, but for those of you who, Deborah Goff-Rosa, she's been through it. There's a number of residents. And I'd like to try to start to get more momentum on this, because when we have a significant incident in town, we rely on some key town employees to do all of it. And Davie's got about 100 people that would spread out throughout Davie to assess the situation in hurricane, assess damage, assess structural stability, all sorts of things. They train you on, you know, assessing a situation when you come up to a building, and you don't know what's going on, but there's no roof and no garage left to it, you know, how to address that. They also train you on first aid, and they train on a number of different firefighting methods as well. I'd love to see us get an organ, I don't mind it being associated with Davie. They're great partners. They offer this to us. But I'd love to see us try to form our own CERT unit out here, so that if we do have an event, we're not called into Davie. We're called to town hall to start looking around to see where we need to send folks out to do damage assessments, or to deal in triage, you know, mass casualty type events. What makes it fun is Davie runs a number of events every month. Over at one of the churches on University Drive, they, they do search and rescue. I think it's every Monday. You can go to Fort Lauderdale's active shooter training, where they bring, you know, police officers into the airport, into a section that's closed for the evening, or depending on what time of the day they do it. They do active shooter drills, and you play victim, you play a number of different roles there. So it, I find it very interesting, but also, any one of these things can happen right here in southwest ranches. And it would be phenomenal if our own residents were engaged with it instead of the surrounding municipalities. I believe all of the cities around us have their own CERT organizations. They don't cost the town a lot. I mean, this is, this is something that you meet on whatever frequency you want, and, and, you know, when they're, when the group needs to be activated, you, everybody comes together. And, you know, some of the interesting things that, that came out of it for me, just watching the news, I'm sure everybody's aware of what went on in Uvalde about six weeks ago, where the shooter went into the elementary school. Well, you heard about nobody knowing who the incident commander is, or was, or should have been. You go through Davie's search training, you know exactly what that is, who it is, how it works, and there's really no question about how that process is supposed to work. So, you know, again, we'd be here to assist the town, to assist Davie Fire Department, Davie Police, within the confines of southwest ranches if we can get this off the ground. So if anybody out in YouTube land would like more information, or anybody here, come see me after the meeting, or give me a call, and I'd love to provide more information. I think it's certainly a worthwhile cause if you have a couple of hours a month to first go through the training and then participate with Davie and continue to learn. They, they meet monthly, not for coffee and cake. They go through new ideas, new concepts. They reinforce training that you've already been provided, so it's a good thing. So I just wanted to bring that out. One other thing that I wanted to bring up that I believe the council all got in their email, but of course, we can't respond to one another, but at 4:32, Judy Fernandez sent us all a note. And Judy's been in town a long time. I mean, since the late 70s. She raised her family here. She is an EMT. Her husband Eddie did the sod work when I built my house. We know him that long. She's not a wilting flower. She starts out an email to us saying, "At 7:15 a.m. on August 1st, I was almost killed on 185th Way," basically in front of her house. She'd just gotten home from a 12-hour shift. She went out to get her mail, and she basically took a step back onto the road and was almost clipped by a car. And I don't want to go through the whole mail, but, I mean, essentially, she lives on our worst cut-through road in town. And that's probably one of the bigger complaints I get. That's within District 1, 185th, 6th, and it's a horror story. You know, from a Griffin Road standpoint, I constantly have people, "I'm going down the road at 40, 45 miles an hour, and if I am any close, as close sometimes as 20 feet from the cars pulling out, I almost hit the cars broadside." It's, it's really a horror story, and that's, that's just at that one intersection. The people that live on that road have done nothing but complain since about the time the town was formed, right?
Yeah, it's been a long time.
And we really have not had any solutions for them. You know, everybody wants to think that putting through, what is it, 184th, from essentially the road that would be from Bonaventure down to Sheridan, I don't think that'll ever happen. That's not really a solution, because one community is dead-set against it, and when I talk to the people over in country states, they don't want the traffic in their backyard. They don't want it in their front yard either. So I don't know what the solution is. But I think we need some help from the town engineer and potentially from Davie PD to calm traffic down over there, because, like I said, she's not a wilting flower. When she sends us an email saying she almost died today, I believe she's probably not overreacting. She probably, you know, had, had, she was probably very scared. So Andy, I don't know what the right answer is. We've been grappling with this forever, but I'd love to turn some energy in that direction again, so we can take a look at it. You know, I was interested in what Jim had said of some of the different recommendations from the Public Safety Board, and maybe we can start looking at employing those, maybe put a, a sign right out there. Very quickly, you know, speeders will be fined, whatever we need to do to start, start calming the traffic, and then go back to looking for some long-term solutions again.
Thank you. Thank you. Please, Andy.
Yeah, this is obviously an issue we're all aware of. I think, I'll get together with Davie PD again to see what we can do as far as stepping up enforcement in that area, because it is, because of the speed humps, there is a traffic volume that goes through there. There's a lot of nurseries out in that area. So some of the nursery trailers tend to go a little bit slower because of the speed humps.
Right.
And then people get frustrated and try to go around them. So I think that's what causes the issue. I'll talk with Davie PD about increased enforcement if we can do it, but it might be an ideal opportunity to bring in a, a traffic engineer and maybe get a fresh set eyes out there.
Yep.
Maybe, maybe there's some suggestions that we're just not aware of.
Yeah, her concern was somebody passing, illegally passing with a double line.
Yeah.
And I think we heard that same concern back within the last month.
Yeah, we've had issues there for a while. It's one of the reasons we did the double line out there.
Right.
Because some people won't pass because of that, but, but obviously, we can't stop everybody, or we've got to find other ways to do it.
Right.
So, yeah, we'll take a look at that.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Bob. I know that you're, that's been around for a long time, so I think it's, it is time to take a fresh look at it. Thank you. I just have one item I wanted to bring up. I spoke a couple of meetings ago about the homes that were being rented out for parties and overnight events, and we've actually made some good progress on that, and I wanted to report on that. We've had two of those come, come before the magistrate, and one of them was fined $15,000. The other one was fined $20,000. So if that doesn't wake up that crew, you know, I don't know what will. Like I said, those, those things are not appropriate for our community, and they need to, they need to straighten out their act or go away, one or the other. And so I'm really pleased that, that we've, we've made that kind of a statement. I want to get that statement out there. I'll be writing my article about it, because I want to get it out there as much as we can to all the other, there's still a lot more out there that need to learn the lesson. Hopefully, they'll learn from these other folks. They won't have to go and learn, learn it the hard way. But I appreciate legal team. I appreciate our code team, Julio and the staff there. They've done a great job, but I also appreciate the residents. The reason why these were successful is because the residents got involved. They, they alerted Davie PD to what was going on, and Davie PD was able to come out and, and find multiple reasons why they were illegal. Sound, the drink, underage drinking, the parking, a whole slew of things. You combine them all, and, and then you get repeat offenders, and that's why it's important to report this stuff, because even if, even if we call Davie PD out, and for whatever reason, the illegal, you know, like if you call them out and they say it's too loud, and they quick turn it down, okay, at least we have a record of it. They get called out time after time after time. When they come before the magistrate, that makes a huge difference. So even though it may not be an immediate result, it builds a pattern that we can then use when we get before the magistrate. So we made some great progress because of great teamwork, great work by the residents, and I want to report that and, and let folks know that we're working on it, and we're, you know, it's going to get better. All right. Legal comments?
No legal comments tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Richard. Administrative comments?
I do have some comments, Mayor.
We were on a roll, Andy.
All right. Well, here's where we slow it down. Put that speed hump in.
All right.
First thing is, is you all met before the meeting, but I wanted to officially welcome Tom Holst, who's going to be joining us as General Services Manager and Emergency Manager.
Welcome, Tom. Welcome.
Tom has a vacation which had been pre-planned for next week, and, and he refuses to cancel that. was able to come out and find multiple reasons why they were illegal. Sound, underage drinking, the parking, a whole slew of things. You combine them all, and then you get repeat offenders. And that's why it's important to report this stuff because even if we call Davie PD out and for whatever reason, the illegal, you know, like if you call them out and they say it's too loud and they quick turn it down, okay, at least we have a record of it. They get called out time after time after time. When they come before the magistrate, that makes a huge difference. So, even though it may not be an immediate result, it builds a pattern that we can then use when we get before the magistrate. So, we made some great progress because of great teamwork, great work by the residents, and I want to report that and let folks know that we're working on it and we're, you know, it's going to get better. All right. Legal comments?
No legal comments tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Richard. Administrative comments?
I do have some comments, Mayor.
We were on a roll, Andy.
All right, well, here's where we slow it down. Put that speed hump in.
All right.
First thing is, you all met before the meeting, but I wanted to officially welcome Tom Hulse, who's going to be joining us as General Services Manager and Emergency Manager.
Welcome, Tom. Welcome.
Tom has a vacation which had been pre-planned for next week, and he refuses to cancel that. So, he'll be joining us the week after.
[laughing]
And we're looking forward to getting him in here. I want to thank Walt Butler, who brought something to our attention at the last meeting about vicious dogs and our particular code that exists within Davie that goes a little bit beyond ours. We've gotten a copy of that. We've taken a look at it. I've shared that with you all individually. Town legal staff is currently drafting something, some modifications that we can make to our code here, and so we look forward to getting that before you as soon as we can. Waste management, as you all know, takes over on October 1st. Can't be soon enough, but I do have some information to share with you tonight, some of the information that we're putting together for residents. I've got draft copies, which I will give to you all tonight. And I'm going to turn it over to Russell to speak to two different items. I'm sorry, council member?
Just, I was going to say, the waste pro issue. Even though I'm a council member, I don't get any special privileges. They missed my pickup today.
Okay.
They missed my pickup today.
Yeah, it was yesterday.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
It's not just you.
I don't have an answer for it at this point. We're going to, you know, we're going to continue to hound them right up until September 30th, but I guess I have to go over to the yard and drag them over here to get them to pick up some stuff sometimes.
Okay.
But we are documenting. It will cost them. I don't know that they care, but it will cost them. As I was starting to say, I'm going to turn it over to Russell. He's got two topics, but before I turn it over to him, just Emily, I know this is your last meeting in person for a while, so this is for you. Meow. And now I need to explain that. I've been here for 10 years. For 10 years, Emily has tried to get me to insert a meow into the administrator's comments at some point during the night, figuring, "Nobody will catch it."
You made it.
So, I wanted to share that for you tonight. If I may turn it over to Russell. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Andy. Just a quick update. Councilmember Kozinski requested an update on the LPR system, and just wanted to, I prepared a timeline with some very detailed information. I don't think it's probably appropriate to go through everything that I have on there, so I'm going to circulate a detailed memo tomorrow to everybody so that you have it. But just to kind of go over some of the items on the timeline, we issued a PO for the LPR system to our contractor back on January 5th. The contractor ordered the equipment, and the equipment was received on March 29th. So, the contractor's been pretty much ready to go since March 29th. However, they obviously needed to go through permitting, and we had some issues with permitting, as you were aware or are aware, or if you're not aware, I'll make you aware now. There was issues with the Broward County right-of-way and the refusal from Broward County to do anything or to accept LPRs in the right-of-way. They went through a very extensive process. They vetted that process now, and they approved that back in June. So, they just recently approved that process to allow us to put LPRs in the right-of-way. So, outside of that, the other things that are holding us up a little bit are some issues with FPNL, and they changed their philosophy as far as allowing the electrical subcontractors to tap into the streetlight circuits, and they're requiring now transformers in some of those areas where we had, in our initial project design, were planning to tap into the streetlight circuits. So, that's adding extra complications to the process, and also unfortunately, is probably going to entail some extra costs. Not probably, it will. We built in some contingencies into the project, as you may or may not recall, but those contingencies were for FPNL and for some standard things that we expected. These are going to complicate things a little bit, so we'll be coming back to you at some point with a change order for that, and we'll be able to decide. Council will get a second bite at the apple on that to talk about that. Where we are-
I'm sorry to interrupt, but any idea when you'll get back? Because this is a hot topic.
No, 100%. I understand. Let me go through the process, and I'll tell you what the projected timeline is for everything, and then as far as, you know, I could answer any other questions at that point. So, the remaining issues are essentially that we have all of the equipment. Everything's ready to go. We have the poles and everything else, but there's four locations where we have remaining issues. The first one is at Southwest 126 and Griffin Road on the eastern boundary of the town. We're going to need an additional RLA or revocable license agreement to place an LPR in what we believe to be county right-of-way. The contractor was operating under the assumption that it was FDOT right-of-way. I've put a question to definitively answer that to Scott Bruner over at the county so that we can provide that to the vendor because they weren't the impression it was FDOT, and there's basically no way you're going to get FDOT to approve something like that, is what they were telling us. So, we're working with the county to get something from them so that the contractor can proceed and seek that RLA for that location. As you may or may not be aware, not only did we request 13 locations throughout the town, but we had a private, set of private residents along Marvin Lane that requested an LPR that they were going to privately fund at that location. So, that's outside of our funding, but it's part of the project, the bigger project. That location, their FPL, as big as they are, they have divisions for everything. So, one division was doing hardening, as we're aware of, that they were doing in Rolling Oaks, and they went through a hardening process at that location and basically removed our access point for a pole there unbeknownst to the rest of the project team, including the FPNL engineer. So, one division of FPNL didn't communicate with the other engineer, the other section. So, that's going to require that a pad-mounted transformer that's been placed behind somebody's fence, you know, on somebody's property, be tapped into and directional board to the location where we want to put the LPR camera pole. So, there's some complications with that as well. Additional costs to do that will be from those private funding sources. It won't impact taxpayer dollars or ARPA funding from the town because that was being privately funded anyway, but it just adds to the project delay, if you will. The other two locations that are of note are on 209th Avenue, and again, 200, hello? I'm sorry, we tested the mics before the meeting, so I'm not sure what happened here. It's back on. So, 209th Avenue, 200, can you hear me?
We can, but you two can't.
Let me try to use the wireless. I don't know why. 209th Avenue, we have the same issue. Hello?
Okay, let's kill that one.
209th Avenue?
Nope.
Hello? Test, test, test. It's coming and going. Test?
Turn it over.
Yeah. And turn down the gain a little bit. It's a little hot. Yeah. Is that better? Can you hear me? Okay. So, 209th Avenue is another location where we had planned to tap into the streetlight circuit off of 209th, and FPNL is basically saying they've changed their policy, and we will not be able to do that. So, that's going to require trenching all the way from a pole that's got a transformer on it that's probably about 300 feet away, and that wasn't what was anticipated. So, again, that's also going to create some additional costs and some additional delay there. And then the last location, same issue, that FPL's policy changed to allow tapping on the streetlight circuit, is at 172nd Avenue on the south end of 172nd, the same issue in the 6700 block. We had planned to put a LPR camera on one of the poles out there, tap into an existing transformer for a streetlight circuit, and they've told us no, so we're going to have to install a transformer as well there. So, those ongoing issues at those locations are adding to the delay here and some of the frustration on the part of the project team from our contractor, as well as myself, obviously. We've been having ongoing meetings. I just want you to know this is not something that we're just, you know, ignoring. We have been meeting with FPNL. We've been meeting with our subcontractor. We're trying to get this continuing to move, but quite honestly, we may have to escalate it a little bit at FPNL. We know who we're going to contact. We're going to start with that person. I think you all know who I'm talking about, and from there, if it doesn't progress, then we'll escalate it from there. So, where do we go from here? The project timeline now, we estimate that it will be complete. Well, let me first say, the first set of poles are going to be placed in the next two weeks, so you'll start to see poles being erected out there. In some of the locations where we don't have any issues, there's no right-of-way concerns or anything else like that, we'll have cameras. We actually have our first cameras already installed here at Town Hall, so there's one location that's already established. Some of those other locations will have the LPR cameras up and running in the next couple of weeks, but we think that because of some of those other complications, that the project won't be completed until mid to late October. So, I know that's not the answer or the news that you probably all wanted to hear. We do have a horizon that we feel that we'll be, you know, comfortable in completing. That's with everybody on the project team, including the FPNL representative, basically, you know, adhering to that, but, you know, it's going to be a little bit more time. So, we think by the end of October, we should be completely done with all of the locations.
Excellent.
Okay?
Yeah, Mayor?
Yeah.
Just to follow, separate from what Russell's on, just I got a request from YouTube Land that you all do a better job with the microphones because they're having difficulty hearing at home, so I just want to pass that along.
Good. Thank you.
Good. I have one other item, Mayor, that Andy alluded to. So, you recall that-
Is it on the readers?
No, it's not. I'm sorry.
Yeah, do we have any questions or any comments on the reader? Yeah.
So, Russell, you guys probably have thought about this already, but when you start talking about 300-
Yeah, please.
I hope this is better.
Much better.
When we start talking about 300-foot trenches, I know they're only this wide and about that deep, but they tend to run into a lot of money. Is there any way to re-establish the place that we would put the pole to shorten up the trench lines?
Well, the hope is to be able to, what's the right term, convince FPNL that our original design plan is the right way to, you know, the right approach.
Right.
It's what we did off of 178th. It's what our subcontractors do in other cities and have not had an issue.
Right.
This appears to be some new policy that FPNL has come up with, so we hope to convince them otherwise, and if we can do that, then certainly we'll save a lot of money and time doing it.
Sure, sure.
So, that's the first approach.
Okay, so Plan B, though, you may have to rejigger the locations on some of these, and when they start talking about longer trenches, additional pads and all that, I can see the numbers going up very quickly.
Yeah. Not only that, but also the equipment is rated for a certain distance.
Right.
And you don't want to exceed that distance, so we certainly don't want to lose signal and lose integrity of the images.
Yep, yep. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm wondering, Andy, Russell, maybe, I'm not sure who to direct it to, but, you know, we get the monthly report, administrator's report. I'd like to see there, maybe we can have just the locations listed and the status of each location.
Certainly.
Where it's at, you know, whether it's waiting for whatever or completed or, you know.
Certainly. We can do that every month.
Yeah, that would be good.
Excellent.
Absolutely.
Good idea.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the readers? Seeing none. Russell, go ahead.
Okay, so we have one other thing. This is kind of a Scribner's error type of situation, but I wanted to bring it all to your attention. Back in May, we all approved, or the council, I should say, approved the new district boundaries. We had a consultant that came in and worked with you all, showed you different options. Council worked very diligently with the consultant to develop those district boundaries. One of the things that, or something that occurred was in using the information that he had received from Broward County, somehow, some way, I'm not exactly sure how, it was explained to me, but it's still, it's not my realm. There's a hole in the boundary essentially that was discovered recently, and it was discovered when we were asking our GIS consultants to go ahead and create the layer, the town boundary layer for placement on the website. The good news is, the hole is a very small hole. I'll explain in a minute. The second piece of good news is that it doesn't affect any population estimates, and no distribution of population issues, no boundaries need to be redrawn, but I just wanted to visually show you what the issue is, and it centers around District 3.
Okay.
And it concerns the area along Dykes Road where the Montessori School is and also where the SBDD property is. As you can see, this is actually the 4A plan that was presented to council, and if you could zoom in just a little bit. Dan, can you zoom in? The blue line represents the town boundary. So, the boundary was correct, but for whatever reason, the yellow part only, you know, basically stops before the town boundary ends, and it should have included the, you know, the full boundary of the town. So, essentially left out like those two properties. And so, I wanted to just bring it to your attention in case you ever questioned, "Well, we approved this, but yet, this is really what it should have been." So, you know, I spoke to legal counsel about it, and they said, "It's a Scribner's error. Just make sure council's aware of it. Hopefully, there's no objection." But again, it doesn't impact population districts, or population density in the districts at all, distributions at all, because those are, you know, non-residential properties there.
Right.
So, if you have any questions, basically, we're going to redraw it correctly. We're going to get the map corrected, so I just wanted to bring it to your attention in full transparency.
Good, good. Any questions, comments on that?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Russell. Appreciate you bringing that up.
[inaudible]
No, no, because we voted for those boundaries. It's just it was not, was not colored properly. All right. No further administrative comment. Item number nine, please.
Item number nine, hopefully this is working. It's an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, Article 45. Article 45 entitled agricultural and- Article 45 entitled agricultural and rural districts to create a new rural residential zoning district with a minimum plot size requirement of 2.5 net acres, providing- Yeah, just take a look at it.
Russell, you want me to read it into the, Russell, you want me to read it into the record?
Your mic is working. I'm not sure.
Yeah. Okay, so just to get it on the record properly. An ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida-
It's not working.
You're not working either.
Okay.
System-wide. Mine's dead.
It works, and then it doesn't work. Sounds like a connection issue.
Jim broke it. Want me to try it again, Mayor?
Yeah, go.
We'll give it one last try. This is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, Article 45, entitled agricultural and rural districts to create a new rural residential zoning district with a minimum plot size requirement of 2.5 net acres, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Third.
I'd like to have those withdrawn. Gary did a ton of work on this. I think he should make the motion to approve.
I'll withdraw my first.
I'll withdraw my second. I'll make the primary motion to approve.
You deserve it.
My second.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. All right. Yeah, this has been a journey. I don't know, Gary, you want to make some comments on it?
Yeah, it started, obviously, back at the beginning of the year, and it's gone through several permutations to finally get to this where we're all comfortable with it. I know I could have probably pulled this off, but it was real important to me to have unity on the council, and I wanted all five of us to be able to agree to something. I didn't want to-
Appreciate that.
Didn't want to try to do a majority vote or a split council or anything like that, and I think we're finally there. And this is also a first in our town. We have never created a zoning code before in 22 years, so this is the first time this has been done, and I'm quite happy with it, and it's something I believe I can support wholeheartedly as everybody else can.
Yeah. Thank you for your work on it, Gary. Appreciate it.
Good job, Mayor. Good job, Gary.
Excellent.
Any other comments on this item?
I just have one question. Assuming this passes tonight, the zoning in progress is over? Is ended?
Yeah, when does the zoning in progress expire?
I think on the last yes.
What is it? Well, no, I mean, it's a separate item. I don't think it's specific. I know that we tied them together, but the zoning in progress, I think, is in for six months.
I don't recall.
As I recall, it's right around now. I think it was early August.
It was the end of July, beginning of August.
Yeah.
Do, is there a requirement for another motion to end the zoning in progress?
No, it just expires. It just expires.
It expires. It's up to last year we renew it if we wanted to keep it longer.
Yes.
The way I remember how we did.
That's exactly right.
Just want to make sure it's ended.
Yeah. All right, very good. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good job.
Yeah. All right, item number 10.
Item number 10 is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the third amendment to the settlement agreement with Broward County for the litigation style City of Sunrise et al. versus Broward County and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on this item? Andy, you have?
I was going to explain it to anybody.
Go ahead, go for it.
Any questions, but if there are no questions.
No, go ahead.
There's a parcel over Coconut Creek, Pompano, by the landfill called the Alpha 250 site that was owned by the interlocal agreement that expired back in 2012. The motion from Sunrise, the litigation from Sunrise, was an effort to have the county sell that and sell the proceeds off to those who members the interlocal agreement. Because the county is looking at where they're going with the future of solid waste management and what they're going to do, they're just asking for more time to consider whether there might be a better use for that parcel that would serve all the communities of Broward. So, we're just conceding them a little bit more time.
Good.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
Good. Thank you. Any comment on this item? Seeing none.[1599.83]